Cal Patel, present. I'm just gonna go through the roll call. Commissioner Patel, present. Commissioner Mark had called earlier to be excused for tonight. Commissioner Angela, we haven't heard from her. I guess it's an absent. We'll see if she joins us in the next few minutes. Commissioner Hank?
Here.
Present. And Commissioner Stephanie has excused herself tonight, correct?
Yes.
Okay, since we don't have a quorum tonight for the meeting, we're gonna go straight to the workshop and we'll just start on that tonight. And we'd love to probably skip the approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes, and since we don't have any public comments, presentation, or public hearings. So I would like to start tonight's workshop, if that's okay with staff.
Yes.
Okay, I would like to hand over the workshop to Heather.
All right, thank you.
Or Zach, whoever wants to take the lead.
I volunteer.
Oh, thank you. That's nice.
I'll just, if you could share the screen privileges with me, Zach, I'll pull up the document that was in the Plan Commission pocket and circulate it.
You should begin.
Thank you. Thank you, and hopefully everyone will be able to see this from the packet. This is a document produced by our consultant framework. And this is a follow-up of last month's meeting, actually the last couple of months' meeting with the Plan Commission, which progressed from a discussion of looking at population growth for Airway Heights as part of this update, which is from 2022 to 2042. Looked at analyzing two different alternatives for the amount of population, which one was based on growth from our allocation on the candidate basis during the last periodic update in 2017, and continuing that out for another a couple of years at the same rate, or looking at a growth factor based on our actual growth rate since 2017, which has been just under thirty percent. They also, in previous reports, and we presented to the Plan Commission the number of total housing units that we would anticipate in this twenty-year planning period, and that's been summarized in the document sent to the Plan Commission for this evening. So we're looking at around a target, a little bit greater than two thousand total housing units. So our horizon is 2042, but based on the last, twenty thirty-seven was the official last periodic update horizon. So we're looking for a few more units than that, but those were covered a little bit earlier. They looked at our housing production, the amount of vacant land that's been consumed in the city since our last periodic periodic update in 2017, and that's what these represent in graphs, in the vacant land that we have available. And as you can see, we have very little vacant land available in the city in our median density, high density zones, and not very much left in our single-family zone, which is what the R1 represents. Though we have quite a bit in the C1, C2, which represents commercial zones that have a mixed-use overlay over them that carries over from our J-list provisions for Airway Heights. In this packet is also a map that indicates the properties that are currently vacant. There's about four hundred and seventy acres. This includes all categories of land use, commercial, industrial, residential, represented in green. And on this map, the orange areas that are diagonally striped represent the urban growth area that was adopted in the 2020 comprehensive plan. And as a matter of background, those urban growth areas actually are were carried forward from the 2008 comprehensive plan. So these have been the same urban growth areas that Airway Heights has had in their comprehensive plan, adopted comprehensive plan since at least 2008. We also discussed with the Plan Commission that there were some political boundaries that potentially we should include when looking at alternatives to address our housing targets, and that means looking at alternatives for how we could accommodate our projection of housing units. So one of them, the pink line, represents a water service boundary. So in Spokane County, we, City of Spokane, and other water purveyors identified our future water service area, and was adopted in a county-wide document. And everything in this drawing, or this image, that's up, which would be north or to the right in this image, and this is Hayford Road right here, is in the city of Spokane Water Service. So they have identified that potentially they would serve public water there. Whereas areas that are inside the city and also going to the west and north of the city limits is part of the city of Airway Heights, identified and adopted water service standards, so areas where we would have the right to serve water. The second boundary that's on this map was a school district boundary, and this is something that came up during the presentation of these early concepts of, you know, some lands we could consider for meeting our housing goals. And this is the school district boundary between Great Northern School District, which is north of the purple line, which is Spring Avenue, that was extended going to the west, and what is south of that line, which is the Cheney School District. There are some base assumptions in the alternatives that we're preparing, and just to remind it, the Plan Commission, and this is for those that are here tonight, we're looking at a series of alternatives that we're gonna put out to the public to give us feedback on as to priorities that the community may see of where areas that should be considered potentially for residential, and this is focused on residential. I can talk a little about the industrial the commercial just a moment, but because our housing numbers, we're looking at where we could accommodate housing because we have very little vacant residential land still left in the city. The assumptions here, then we'd be carrying forward the same densities from our last comprehensive plan. So low density means up to five minutes per acre. Medium density means up to ten minutes per acre, and high density is ten to twenty minutes per acre. There are several different alternatives that we're gonna go through. So these were presented to both the City Council and the Plan Commission about what would you like to, you know, put in here? And pretty much both the Plan Commission and City Council said, well, put them all out there so that we can get feedback from the public about what they would see as a preferred alternative, and within those alternatives, what might be somebody, what they think would be locations that we should consider having as residential zoning or residential designation as part of our urban growth area. So there's a lot of input to the development of the maps. I should note, we, you know, out of the school district boundary, the water service boundary, because they can affect, for example, water steps we would have to take before we could actually consider areas outside the city for an urban growth area for Airway Heights. We also went through a process looking at potentially swaps of our current urban growth area, which were in that first map. So these are our current urban growth areas in the 2020 comprehensive plan, and we discussed with the Plan Commission if they wanted to consider some swaps, which we would be able to do under the candidate planning policies. This piece right here has already been under discussion for almost two years, a hundred and eighty acres that currently contains Spokane County's Offroad Vehicle Park. It's not likely to ever become residential development. And Spokane County has indicated that they would support the idea of a swap for another hundred and eighty acres for Airway Heights. This is a joint planning area with Spokane County. This area already is inside of the urban growth area for Airway Heights, and I should mention, these are also adopted, I believe, by Spokane County, which are in their last valid comprehensive plan. And these areas down to the south, the Plan Commission did not want to consider swaps, nor to consider a swap for this piece of property here. So we're only looking at a hundred and eighty acres total of urban growth area we might wanna consider putting into the public for consideration of where else could we have an urban growth area. So our reminder is, urban growth areas are for purposes of urban expansion. And it's our responsibility as part of this overall effort to do the identification of potential land, that this could be, and do the necessary actual analysis of our ability to serve. And that means police, fire, water, sewer, and other services that we, transportation, you know, other services that we typically provide. So we would be looking at these alternatives to guide additional analysis we would do in 2022 to see if we could serve these areas. So these would remain. That was one of the recommendations of the Plan Commission, which they're currently in our 2020 comp plan. There does need a combination of commercial and industrial. So moving on. Let's see, let's go to the description of the alternatives. So the first alternative, and I'll just go to the maps because it's probably gonna be easiest. The first alternative represents the latest designations that we have carried forward from the 2020 comp plan. And as we've briefed the Plan Commission over the past couple of months, we have brought forward a variety of either projects that were approved in the 2020 comp plan or applications that are pending, so that they would be there for the public to see as part of this consideration of calculating potential land that we might be able to use with a residential use designation for housing. And I'm just gonna go through this real quickly. So the first is A, which is already in our 2020 UGA area that we would identify as residential. It's about a hundred and thirty acres. Properties B1, B2, B3, and B4 are the Hunter's Crossing property in which the city received a request to re-designate those from low-density residential or commercial to high-density residential. The compromise that was reached with virtual air force space and City Council was medium-density residential, and that's what was adopted into the 2020 comp plan. It's not currently zoned, medium density, but the comp plan does show it medium density, and so we're carrying that forward in this alternative, so the public can see that there potentially could be a designation of up to ten minutes per acre. We also adopted the downtown plan in April of 2021, and in that was a recommendation to include high-density residential north of the proposed downtown area, and that has been carried forward in this alternative. We also carry forward a designation in our zoning in, discussed in our comprehensive plan, that goes through the corridor US2. And these are the areas that since 2018 have been identified as potential mixed use. So in other words, there are opportunities to apply for mixed use, which is retail or office below multifamily in an area along US2. But in the last comp plan, the assumption, the 2020 comp plan, was that thirty percent of this area will become residential, and it seemed that since we hadn't seen a single project applied for mixed use, that moving forward for the next twenty years, so the previous ten years, we didn't have a single project. Moving forward to the next twenty years, we'd be unlikely to have thirty percent of this area changeover. And so this proposes to change the assumption for this comprehensive plan that it would really only be somewhere around ten percent. So it substantially lowered the idea that we would get the housing we need based on our population from this area. And then we also carried forward rezon that started in 2018, that's about twenty-eight acres. It actually was larger. It was a rezon of about fifty acres from the Calisville Tribe. And since that application started in 2018, the Calisville Tribe successfully requested that the Bureau of Indian Affairs convert about twenty-one, twenty-two acres of that to trust land. So it's no longer in a rezoning process because it's no longer subject to either city of Airway Heights or Washington State land use control. It's now trust land. But the remainder of it, they haven't not finished the rezon process to go from commercial to high-density residential. And so we've carried it forward on this map so that people are aware that it's an pending application potentially to increase the density of this piece of property. So what this does is it's kind of a, if we just go forward with what we already have adopted in 2020 in the comprehensive plan, and we consider applying the recently adopted downtown plan recommendations for zoning, and we carry forward an application that we have been being forwarded by Plan Commission and City Council, what if all of these were moved forward and be designated as residential? And the consultant has recommended for A, that it be medium-density residential. Everything else is carried forward from another plan or application. So that's alternative one. Alternative two carries forward all of those kind of base, either existing in an adopted plan or, you know, pending application for Calisvilles. And it looks at the idea of two different ways to try and add residential to the city, so we might be able to accommodate our housing demand over this twenty-year period. So the first is, if we look inside the city limits, what if we consider some rezoning of property? And these are G, which is about eighty-three acres. And the other one is H, which is about fifty acres. Both of these are currently heavy industrial. They are within the city limits, you know, within our service area for water, sewer, you know, transportation, fire, and police. And while it's not depicted on these maps, because we didn't think it was gonna be meaningful to the public, because this is intended as a as a series of maps, maps to be used for a survey. These areas are outside of our adopted sound contours under joint land use planning for compatibility with virtual air force space. So the idea here is that potentially it could maybe be medium-density residential, and the reason for that is because the city has a destination recreational facility located right here, which is the rec center plus the additional fifty acres of play fields that are in this location. So that's, that's one concept. The other was to consider options for swapping that hundred and eighty acres. So that hundred and eighty acres is, here's F. Again, it has an off-road vehicle park, and the money invested by the county comes from the state ROC, and they just did their master plan update for this facility, and the county's not projecting any time in which this would not continue to be a park facility. So, and concept, the county agrees with us of doing a swap for a hundred and eighty acres. So F1 and F2 are potential rough areas where there might be a swap of that hundred and eighty acres. Both of them are contiguous to current city limits. They are both within our current water service boundary. One of them is actually outside of the school district boundary. So this one, F1, would be in the Great Northern School District, which doesn't prohibit it being, you know, incorporated into, incorporated to city limits. These properties, let's see, are, are again proposed by the consultant to likely be medium-density residential, which is up to ten minutes per acre. We would not be able to do both, and ultimately, that the idea here is to throw out several alternatives, and then through a survey that goes with these maps is to ask the public to, like, prioritize, or what they think would be the most likely, or where they see logical extension, or what they'd like to see potentially for urban designation as part of the UGA area. So again, all of these areas that we've identified are outside of our adopted sound contour limitations for J-list. There was discussions of doing, for example, this little piece of property here, the last Plan Commission, but again, when we overlaid our J-list contours, it came right through that piece of property, and so it's been excluded from consideration from last month's meeting. So alternative three builds again and provides mainly additional UGA alternatives. So again, that hundred and eighty acre swap. There are two that are adjacent to the city on the west. There were two that the Plan Commission and the City Council wanted to move forward for public input to the east, and this is Hayford Road. This one would be around two hundred and eleven acres that would extend along government way. So here's Dino, and it becomes government way heading towards Spokane, and this is again Hayford Road. And the other represents a property that is owned by the New England Oswalds, which has been part of that conversation for the past two years. But there was a proposal that a consultant to, instead of coming off of US2, which had been the application in Spokane County, and it would bring in more commercial and industrial land, would be considered some type of connection on the extension of spray, and keep the property outside of the J-list contour. So it would be land north of of that, and also there's an airport overlay zone on that side of Hayford Road that we'd be looking to avoid. And so it could bring in about a hundred and eighty acres in the realm, in that location. The challenge there, and why this water service boundary is represented on the map, is because again, this is in the city of Spokane's water service boundary. And so these two, being I and J, would likely be UGAs where we might discuss them in the comp plan, but we would not adopt them, and we would not propose to the county to adopt them, because without Airway Heights' ability to provide water service, we can't complete the necessary capital facilities and utilities analysis, and we would we would identify it as like a future UGA area, and it would allow between now and our required periodic update in 2026 to potentially discuss with Spokane, a change in the water service boundary, you know, do the necessary analysis for service, if it made it to a final land use alternative, a preferred alternative, that we would study in this comp plan, and have discussed this alternative idea with Scott Chisney, who is the planning director for Spokane County, that we may end up with having some proposals for UGA areas that would be put out there as future UGAs, but we would not adopt them as a final UGA during this comp plan, but would enable us to be further steady and work toward those for the next periodic update. So where the analysis comes in is that the consultant also included for your consideration basically how many housing units that each of these alternatives would produce, which was the goal. We had very little vacant land available. We're looking at a combination of maybe some rezoning within the city, maybe an urban growth area exchanged so that we could get residentially designated land. And the conclusions were that alternative one would generate a range of density from eighteen hundred to about twenty-five hundred units. Why is there a range? Well, remember, some of the properties in these maps have a density range of ten to twenty, and some only go up to five. So when we look at the acreages based on the density that could go with them, this is how there happens to be a range of housing. So potentially, alternative one, we could meet our projected population and housing demand if we, if we adopted everything that was an alternative one. An alternative two, it produces additional housing, so thirty-one hundred to thirty-eight hundred. The largest alternative, and again, this doesn't distinguish that we might have, you know, obviously. So for example, when we look at I and J, just to get, so you can see this, we would, we would not be able to do I and J. We can only do a hundred and eighty acre swap. Right? We're not, we're not looking to, and we're not going to propose to recommend, you know, three hundred acres of UGA. We're only looking at a hundred and eighty acre swap. But the analysis that they keep provided, you know, on a gross level, would tell us that I, which is the northern piece, would generate essentially about a thousand potential units, and J would give us about nine hundred and thirty units, based on the idea that this property would be medium-density, which is up to ten minutes per acre. So the goal here is to throw out a variety of options for the public to consider. There'll be a survey monkey that goes along with this that will allow people to identify by the numbers, their preferences or priorities. There'll be a concise summary that explains what I've just gone through in this memorandum, so it's easier for people to read and understand. They don't have to read this whole document and be able to give us feedback. And what we've been working toward is to put this out for public for about a month and come back in February and report the results of the public engagement activity and and see what the public indicated that they thought was a good idea, a bad idea, what's a priority for them. We're also going to be posting this on our project website, and people will be able to actually go into the document and put notes in here, you know. So they'll say, love this, you know, why didn't you consider this? And we'll be able to report all that feedback to the Plan Commission in February. Our goal, as we discussed earlier, is to work with the Plan Commission in February and develop a single preferred alternative based on this feedback that we would then share back with our consultants working on the comprehensive plan and do the analysis that I just mentioned, so that we could look at our capital facilities, the whole service, or utilities, you know, capacity to serve the change in land use or different UGA, with the transportation impacts, so that we would be able to analyze that, come back with, you know, final version of the land use map for a draft comprehensive plan, which our goal is to likely have around April of this year. So we have a map with coordinated analysis and reciprocating studies that go with this, so that we would have analyzed these lands as part of of the comprehensive plan, and we would go back to the public into an open house and do a series of engagement activities on the full plan and get people's feedback for that plan. So to help the public understand density, because I think everybody gets really stuck in this idea, like, single-family or duplex or triplex. This document is also including some examples within the state about what low density looks like, so we can get away from this idea, just, you know, single-family. But because density ranges can be very limiting on what you can build, I think it's a really good way to help people understand. So low density, what it looks like at five minutes per acre looks like these examples. So we've got some Olympia. Looks like these examples. So we've got some Olympia, Spokane, uh, Montana. Pullman, Washington, uh, Shoreline and Langley. So basically you're talking. Probably, um, small to large detached single family homes. Typically in a five unit per acre, uh, context. Now, it could have clustered houses in this shoreline example. Are very, very small homes, probably less than twelve hundred square feet. Um, on a lot that probably corresponds to their, to the footprint of the house. Or it might be on a common piece of property with a condominium and then it's a shared common area. Uh, and Langley, I believe is similar in that way. The next example and hopefully the stream is keeping up with you because it's lagging on my side. Can you see the medium density residential images? Okay, medium density residential, uh, could be townhomes, uh, such as the example from Seattle. And from Montana. Duplexes, the building for international residential code allows those, you can have a stacked duplex. So one duplex over the other, they, they don't have to be a traditional side by side. Like the other Seattle, Seattle example. Uh, you could again have plain communities, you could have clusters, single family housing and enough to ten unit per acre. Uh, so these would be predominantly what you, you might be able to see in that kind of example. And you could have scattered in that maybe a triplex or a fourplex, uh, but the density. Uh, limitation of ten is, is not going to allow, uh, a, a great deal of, um. Construction about underutilizing land and that would be disincentive to property. Now, ten to twenty units per acre, you have examples. Of a variety of, again, townhomes, uh, garden apartments. So these would be units oriented. Around a common courtyard or an open space or a garden or a park. Uh, they're typically limited in the number of units, you know, maybe nine to twelve units in a, in a complex. Uh, there's multi-family, um. Where you might see twenty, you know, twenty three units in the building. Fourplexes certainly could be built, planned development, which is a mix of housing types. Uh, and again, multi-family. So the goal of, of this was to give some examples to the public as they look at this. Of what, what it actually looks like and might feel like when we're talking about density in those maps. So, uh, I was just going to pause here, see if there were any questions about the document from the consultant. Before continuing.
Uh, I had a question. Uh, if we look at airway heights today, just an overall. Uh, view, not just any particular location, we would be more like a low density, right?
Most of the city, and honestly, it's alternative one for purposes of color. Uh, most of the city is this light yellow single family, which is low density residential. For, for what we have for residential, yes, most of it is designated for single family.
And, and, and from your experience or point of view, do you find that people prefer. To have high density in a certain location in the city or they don't have a problem with it being scattered all over. Medium or high density, like, you know, for example, say you're in a residential area. And right behind that R one, you put a high density, for example. Do you generally see people kind of opposing to that?
I would say that, uh, through the, the many years I've done planning that. Um, there have been concerns by the public of putting a large. Uh, multi-unit, multi-family projects on a shared property line. With low density residential, which is probably detached, single family. Um, now, multi-family can realistically go anywhere where there's available, you know, and services, et cetera. The, the key here in residential, um, has to do with. Offering variety or, or choice, and we're going to talk about that as part of the next workshop. Um, and it, and it has to do with providing options for all income and all age groups. Through their housing cycle. Um, so, you know, it can be suitable to put. Um, more, a, a building that has more units next to residential often finds it really comes down to. What, how is it built? You know, does it? If it's an infill project, is it, is it compatible with the existing residential area in its, in its characters? And the materials used, the building height, you know, the pitch of the roof. Uh, the scale of the building, uh, those types of things often. Uh, when expressed as part of a project will mitigate initial concerns about multi-family.
By the way, the, the presentation is very good, very detailed.
Oh, thank you.
Very nice, easy to understand, simple, not too complicated, you know?
Other questions about the handout in the packet?
So this will go more to a survey type of, uh, scenario with the, with the public, right?
Yeah, the goal is to get public feedback.
No, I don't have any more questions. If Hank has a question. There's only two of us. Hank, come on. It's good. I, I think the pictures make a, a lot of, um, difference, you know, for people to understand. Makes it clear.
Thank you, you're muted.
And, uh, Cal, just a heads up, Angelina has been with us for a while, so she is here.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
But we don't have, uh, anything to, to wort on tonight, so we'll just carry on with the workshop. And maybe, uh, bring back the, um. Minutes of the last meeting in the next meeting to be approved, if that's okay with everybody.
Um, well, if Cal, if we can come back to this workshop, um, after you do the minutes and the agenda, right? We've got just a couple more things to touch bases on.
Okay. Then we'll finish the workshop first, okay?
Okay.
Since we started it, I like to finish it.
Okay, absolutely. Uh, let's see, so, uh, today we did receive a letter. From Spokane County, which was forwarded to the Frank Commission. And, uh, there also is a memorandum in there that, uh. Responds to, I guess, the questions or issues raised in that, that, that letter from Spokane County. Planning the building apartment. And so in summary, um, there was reference to, uh, that the areas. That were proposed for both, um, inside the city limits and outside the city limits for. Uh, zoning designation in urban growth area, um. That's, and then we'll get the specific language here, right? That the areas was, was restricted for development by J list guidance. Um, I did, in the memorandum, I did provide a copy of our JIS system for our current. Adopted, uh, contours for joint land use and compatibility with Fairchild Air Force Base. And I think what happened was Spokane County is a different set. Uh, sound contours that they adopted in airway heights. And so in our analysis, according to our JIS, which we obtained from Fairchild Air Force Base for those nineteen ninety five sound contours. All of the properties, uh, with the exception of the Calisville rezon. That twenty eight per piece are outside of sixty five contour. And in the J list, um, the military impact area three and four. Identified safety measures for Fairchild for any property that lays within a sixty five or greater sound contour. And discourages residential growth on the sixty five to sixty nine and prohibits from seventy. And so, um, again, these properties were not within our adopted nineteen ninety five. Um, sound contour that we provided, um, to our consultants. We asked to overlay, ensure that we weren't including properties. For purposes of this review, we very much want to ensure continued compatibility. With Fairchild for the land planning that we're doing, uh, as we move forward. And, uh, we've offered to meet with, uh, Spokane County and Fairchild Air Force Base, which we're going to do next week. And, and kind of discuss the background and the analysis that went into this. Um, map series that were prepared. In addition to the letter from the county also indicated that the B one through four properties. Were subject to an agreement that would not allow, um, for a medium density designation, to which, um, I provided information. That this was actually completely vetted, it's on the record, uh, for the twenty twenty conference of plan, um, in which. The property owners had sought high density residential and working with Fairchild Air Force Base representative. Who mitigated this stance of medium density residential. Um, subject to a development agreement and a full, um, transportation impact analysis. Which they're still working through and that's why it appears in our twenty twenty plan. As medium density residential, but it is not on our current zoning map because they've not met the conditions. To get the rezon, uh, for those, those four properties that constitute, I don't know, about twenty acres. So, um, did, did provide, um, that information in a quick email and reference, um, our JIS system. But I wanted to include the memorandum here, uh, for the blank commission so they would have the information about the properties. And I did cite the RCW, which provides undergrowth management specifically for base compatibility. But, um, the standard is an adopted development regulation, which is identified as a means of, um, achieving base compatibility. So our adopted code and our adopted, um, sound contours are the standard today now. Um, in the future, if airway heights were to consider changing. Um, the technical basis on which, on which we look at, um. Regulating residential activity by looking at a different data set, like the, um, Spokane County. And that's, that's an analysis that would have to occur at some point in the future if the city were to consider it. But it is, is certainly important, um, to be aware of this, is that they have adopted a different set of data. And the impacts to airway heights are dramatic. If the city were to consider adopting the two thousand nine, uh, J list contours, it would, um. It would make properties, um, less likely for us to be able to consider for residential development. Because it is, is larger, um, than the nineteen ninety five contours. When we look at the areas west and north of the city, there, there are some potential. Changes that may be beneficial if we look south of US two, it might bring, it might take a few properties more US two quarter out. Of the sound contour immediately, um, out of the area, but it, it's something out there that's very valid to. To think about when we move forward with considerations, uh, future impacts of a designation. Um, if we were to consider that.
But you know, uh, one thing, I have a question is that, uh, spoken, uh, county planning. You, uh, uh, said night E, for example, you say areas restricted for development. Uh, does not support residential growth. What would be the reason for that? Because he is almost like in the middle of the town, right?
Um, let me pull up that map again, um, so that would be helpful to, to look at it, um.
It's on their second sheet where they put a summary. They, uh, put alternative one, two and three on the top.
Heather, Heather, you, the Calisville re, the result for the Calisville trip?
Yes, I'm just getting back to the map. To pull it back up so that everybody can see what we're talking about. Uh, so this piece of property right here, um, is the one specifically that, that letter identifies. And, uh, that property. Is currently commercial. It was identified, excuse me, in a twenty eighteen adoption by. By airway heights as part of an area that potentially could have mixed use. It was actually settlement out of a lawsuit. This property was included. That the provisions that had been in, um, J list, I indicated that. It is possible to be residential because it's in a sixty five to sixty nine, I believe. Um, but the criteria in J list, which is seventeen sixteen of our municipal code indicates as a case by case basis. That they have to demonstrate community need, um, that's not otherwise met in other areas. So rather than taking a brief statement, um, in a, in a letter, I would. Um, reference the actual code provision that talks about. What the criteria is to consider residential. So absolutely, this is a pending application, just as a history on this, um. And because Cal will remember this, uh, because this came through. In twenty eighteen and this predates, uh, both Zach and I, but this application was proposed to go to high density residential. It went through the plant commission, the plant commission, as our call, um. Had reservations about this proposal and it went to the city council and the city council remanded it back to the plant commission and did not get approved. Because of concerns about the density that was proposed. Because of R three, which is the implementing zone for high density. Would allow up to twenty units per acre and it would allow multi-family. And the, the city council, uh, did not prove it, but they sent it back, which is one of the options of city councils can do. Um, to the blank commission, um, is to send it back to consider, um. Ways in which this project can be modified in order to lower the density. And to, um, not allow for multi-family. And, and my understanding was that the city council wanted to limit the density to ten minutes per acre. So since that time, the Calisville tribe has been working on a proposal, which is a development agreement. And a, a, a site frame schematic that would, uh, work on trying to achieve. That direction that the city council gave. So when. The Calisville tribe is completed with those documents, we will bring back. The proposal was directed by the city council to the planning commission to consider. So while it says high density residential, because that reflects the actual application. Um, what has been asked of the councils to lower the density and not have multi-family. Now, it still has to go through the remainder of a review, public review process, including. A consideration of blank mission and whatever the Calisville's proposed. And we go back to the city council, likely through a public hearing, which would, um, include public notification of the city council hearing of. Of that, so it's here because it's under consideration. That's why we, we've moved it forward and absolutely. Um, there are, um, criteria in J list that would have to be considered by the city council. As part of reviewing that application.
And I think, uh, based on two thousand eighteen and today's, um. Target for growth, I think it's two different things. Back in two thousand eighteen, the growth was, I guess, less than five percent per year.
Is, is reflected for.
It was pretty low, I think so, right? I'm not sure. But back then in two thousand eighteen, I don't think airway heights. Had any idea that, uh, it was gonna grow this fast. And I think the commissioners at that point didn't feel that high density was needed. So maybe the situation today is different, you know?
Well, um, when this application comes before the blank commission, um, as directed by the council with their supporting documentation. That would be something for the blank mission to consider. Uh, so that.
I don't.
Oh, go ahead.
I don't have any questions. Go ahead.
I was just going to include, uh, the presentation, the material, um, just wanted to draw your attention. We did receive a letter. We concluded memorandum. Um, before the memorandum, to Spokane County and to Fairchild Air Force Base. Because, um, this all is happening today, at the end of business day on Friday. Um, actually, in business day yesterday, sorry. Um, working on responding today and we'll forward, we'll follow up with a meeting with Spokane County and Fairchild, uh, next week, I believe.
Thank you, Heather. Anybody have any questions for Heather?
Um, I do believe that Jamie Kowalski, uh, is here. I don't know if she's representing Fairchild Air Force Base. But if, um, she was interested, um, then served in the department. Um Ben Sir from the Department of Commerce is here and Sher K. From the Washington State Department of Transportation are here as well and Kevin Freebuck from the city of Spokane, so. Um if they have any any um. Comments that they'd like to um provide, if you, Cal, as the chair, um we're willing to. Engage any of them in uh dialogue or questions about the alternative, I think it would be helpful for all of us.
Hi Heather, it's Jamie.
Hello.
Hey Jamie.
Hi, Cal. Um. I know that we have some issues with some of the areas. Um I know that uh Scott and. Jeff maybe sent, you know, you guys got an email from from the county and so I just look forward to working with you guys. To um figure out what works best for everyone.
Absolutely.
I was wondering where Jamie was tonight, usually she's pretty active when the air force is concerned, but it's good to hear your voice again.
Thank you.
I think this will be a good uh project moving forward as the city is growing and. And as far as getting everything organized for the future.
Um I wasn't sure if there is anybody else who wanted to ask any questions to go.
I know, I know Kevin said he's good, but I haven't heard from uh from Ben or Shar, so if either one of you two has any comments.
Good evening, this has been Sir, Department of Commerce. Um I did not prepare any comments for this meeting, but I'm happy to take questions if there are any questions that I might be able to help with.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, my pleasure.
I think you probably have more questions in the uh in the next meeting after we get the survey from the public and everything, so.
Well, um back to this presentation, next steps are, um we're gonna send a letter out to all of the property owners that have a potential lady's designation as a courtesy. Uh that'll go out probably tomorrow, uh letting them know that their property was identified, if it's a potential lease change. That they can throw a statement of a process, they can write us letters uh about their thoughts about their property being included. And then the goal is to have this document on our project website, which is, which uh Zach will put up in the chat. And a survey will be associated with it, that will happen this week. And then we're gonna do an every door mailer. So then likely go at the beginning of next week, um inviting people to the website to take the survey. And that'll run basically until about the beginning of February, uh our consultants will tabulate the results. Um the comments, information that we get and we'll be presenting. The summary of that to the plant commission that are reading in February, as well as the results of the transportation survey. That was put out in December and is still open. Um so just to recap, we're using uh MailChin to notify these surveys for every email account that. We have access to, which includes utility providers who gave us email. Addresses, uh businesses that gave us email addresses through business licensing. Uh Parks and Recreation membership that we got email uh addresses through, so that list is. Four thousand, I think. Um putting it out on Facebook, having it on the project page. Um the lease one will have a everyday, every door flyer. Um and then uh our consultant, you know, if they scan, reach back out to the original stakeholder group that we're here to be on, so the project will know about the survey. So that's gonna get a lot of agencies uh as well, so again, continuous, I think, public engagement around, you know, the process. Not just like the beginning and the end, but um throughout the process about these opportunities to be engaged. In the project and and then we'll look for developing drafts uh over the following months and. Having a final draft hopefully um by April of this year, um for an open house for medical engagement activity. And that's that's it in a nutshell.
You you think you'll have enough time to get data by next meeting, next meeting, February?
Uh yeah, I think so, I mean, we'll have almost a month of of review for.
But we won't see this to going to a public hearing till probably April, right?
Yeah, what what we're trying to do is narrow down the options, this is just like. Oh my gosh, here is, you know, all these potential properties and and we're trying the best to. Ensure, you know, we can serve and and you know, it's not, you know, walking into the logical to to look at these. Narrow the um in it in the preferred alternative might be a new alternative that's picking and choosing from the other.
Right, that's true, that's true. Number four might show up, right? That's good. Thank you, if nobody has any further questions, I I think we can move to the introduction to housing element.
Yeah, so we get to, we get to talk about one of my favorite subjects that we've been uh.
Oh.
Kind of working around, which is why we're not talking about, this is a single family zone, we're gonna talk about density. And housing choice. Super fun, and this is gonna, this is gonna resonate because you you heard about this. Uh all over the news probably for the last couple of years because of the housing crisis. Uh so this information is created, is readily publicly available. Uh and we're gonna talk about housing um. In the sense of kind of what we might be missing, so airway heights is predominantly. Detached, single family housing on individual lots or they are large multifamily buildings. We do have areas uh that contain mobile home parks with with older symbol Y and mobile homes in them, that's that's really the only housing choices people have in our community. But it doesn't really speak to the housing that people may need. And about how housing changes through someone's life cycle, what they may need. When they uh you know, first run on their own or if they're um have a partner or if they um. Are elderly and have a desire to have a low maintenance uh housing situation and. Preferences are gonna change as well from, you know, rental to owner to maybe rental. Throughout someone's life, so we're talking about a, you know, span that potentially is setting them sixty, seventy years for. For somebody and housing lasts a long time, obviously, when it's constructed, the goal is it's. It's gonna be there with a life expectancy, you know, fifty, eleven years. Um if you're in the east coast, it could be a lot longer, so we're gonna talk about. Housing that we're missing, which is very commonly missing in our community, in our state, in our region and throughout the United States. And we're gonna talk about some options that we're gonna consider when we develop our housing chapter. And giving alternatives now, um at our last meeting, I think Mark had asked the question, well, isn't housing related to the person who developed it? Absolutely, the the city's not making the choice for the property owner, but we're giving alternatives and ultimately, when we develop zoning, we we hope to include incentives. That will help make some of these other types of housing um projects. Occur in here we hide, so we can begin to develop options and then the other thing we've heard, you know, for many, many. Years is that the more diverse a neighborhood is, the more sustainable and that that means people move in and s- and. Um it's, you know, stable in a lot of ways for people remaining, they go from strangers to neighbors. Uh that you uh you see uh better outcomes for the neighborhoods whole when we have a mix of of various housing types and so it's. It's, you know, certainly um people's current reality that if you live in a certain type of. Housing situation surrounded by that same type of housing that it that you're coming to expect a certain. Um outcome, that's not necessarily true, we know um that when we look at. Uh for example, in Spokane, where their neighborhoods were sixty percent or greater are rental versus homeownership. Um and then we have other neighborhoods where, you know, it's closer to a fifty fifty split, you know, how how sustainable those neighborhoods may be. So this is a cute uh website, it's called missy middle housing dot com. And it has a lot of information about missing it all, but it basically identifies um different kinds of housing concepts that can fit into the landscape of communities. And what they actually look like and what it takes in order uh to develop a standard for them to be included. So um I'll just go to the images because that's way faster and of course, these are taken from all over the nation, they're not, they're not local examples. We talked earlier about duplexes, duplexes, we've seen some, they're not very common, sometimes we see a development where it's all duplexes, it's not a a mix of. House and types, but they're side by side. Duplexes can also be stacked under the International Residential Code. Uh everyone is probably familiar, seen a stacked duplex. There are other kinds of housing that are not um big apartment complexes, and so here's an example. This is called a courtyard apartment. Um there can be single story, it can be a little over three stories in height. Uh but what they are is a limited number of apartments that are around a courtyard or a garden or an open space. And what this does is it, it may take a small thing, a slightly larger lot. And allows for a little more density, uh but it does it in a way. That continues forward with the idea of smaller scale, um so they're they're low rise and they're not. High number of units in the project. Uh in these types of situations, parking is typically off of the alley, so their garages may be. In the back of the development, uh but typically oriented toward the street. And that the buildings are close together, so these are just some images from around the country of kind of what a courtyard. Apartment uh may look like uh through the variety of materials and choices through time. Another uh is cottage court. As an example, these are typically always going to be single story, there's gonna be what we call low rise. And again, they're oriented around a courtyard uh area. They're often limited in the number of units again, so they're smaller scale projects uh that occur. They take a little bit, you know, larger lot than a single family lot. And so a lot of this specification information has to do with how wide the lot would need to be, how deep the lot, this is more. Usable on creating it like a new zoning code to go with it, but it kind of gives you an idea of acreage, you can get a lot of units. Out of uh these types of options for cows and so. You know, thirteen to thirty eight dwelling units per minute acre. Uh would be some of the examples, so here's kind of cottage housing complex over in Kirkland. Um these are older projects that are, I believe, located in the California area. See, I have to move your, I have to move your faces to see. I believe this one is. Might also be on the west side. But these are again, the example between the last one and this one, and these are typically one, one and a half story, kind of low rise options. For housing. Uh and these also are detached, so the first one. Were, they were in wall to wall connected, these are individual units, but on a common property. More of what you might call cottage housing, a cottage courtyard. Townhouse, I think everyone's pretty familiar with, um they're also called uh row houses. They're technically a single family residence, so the, in this image, the top and the bottom are one unit. And they share a common wall, side wall with another single family. Many times, the actual townhouse, the property one is on the shared common wall line with the next unit over. In Washington state, it requires for about four or more of these put together to make a town home complex. Uh there is median uh density multiplexes, these are typically in low rise. Two, two and a half stories, you can get uh twelve units per acre, so this is. Squarely in our median density residential uh type of projects that we could consider. And these are just some examples, they're they're smaller, multifamily, all the units are enclosed and simple building, a single piece of property, no, no courtyard. Um opening for each unit, this is stairs, elevators, um in order to access the individual, so they can be. Uh units on the top, units on the bottom. To build them, you know, they're relatively small in scale. These are stacked triplexes, uh how many plank mission members went to Highland Village Open House? Back in this, back in the December? Anybody go to that? Um Highland Village is actually using um triplexes. For their project, you know, they technically are connected by breezeways, but those are stacked. Only two units high. Uh but then they have um more, two units on top and one unit on the bottom, and on the bottom, their garage is on the backside, so those are stacked triplexes. That they're uh building here in airway heights and they they look relatively small and they. I would encourage anybody who hasn't been out there to drive through that new neighborhood and they're using things like building articulation to make them. Uh have a scale more similar to single family residential, you know, by having some walls back and some walls out and, you know, having some. Protreating windows and things like that, but that would be a local example of a stacked triplex. Uh and then with work, this is something that uh. Is very basically what we call the excuse in our code, we we do allow it on a limited basis in that commercial area that was hatched on the maps. This would be something uh to consider. In other areas, we've talked about maybe in this plan, if we had some neighborhood retail. That was further to the north, but the idea is you have residential above, it can be more than one layer residential above with an office. Or retail on the bottom floor. So uh these are um some great examples, it's a great website to just kind of poke around, see what might be out there. Some of these lend themselves to rental opportunity. Um you know, duplexes, certainly some of them could own the duplex and live on one side, they can both uh be rentals. Same thing in a in a fourplex or even a courtyard apartment. Uh but again, think about people going through through different stages in their life and what they might need, so. This is just to introduce you to the topic, the goal is to start looking at the opportunity to include these other housing forms. In our housing chapter of the conference of plan and eventually allow them to our zoning code, which would be the implementation of the comp plan and and looking at some. Different forms uh in the area and, you know, what would be the most appropriate areas for for these to be located at. So just kind of looking um at this real quick, were there any questions off the top about? Um why maybe for missing middle or what's in those examples of of housing? Might look like, feel like, or want to be.
So when you, when you put this in the prompt comp plan, it would be like a suggestion, right, to the? Or would there be a specific language saying? How how the townhouses should be designed or built? Will there be a guideline or just likes? Like, like, you know, for example, would it be one bedroom, two bedroom sizes?
Well, we would certainly in the land use category description, we would identify the types of housing that would be appropriate, so in, let's say, the median density, ten minutes per acre. We would say duplexes, fourplexes, triplexes.
I see, okay.
Um courtyard and cottage housing and townhome, we would say, you know, these six forms are probably appropriate. We would say, you know, these six forms are probably appropriate because when we look at the development standard, they they envision, you know, being able to be built in a context of, you know, up to ten units per acre. And then we could add to the comp plan policy language that says, you know, this type of housing should have standards developed for for infill compatibility. And these could include like ensuring that buildings are no more than two stories so that they they match the neighboring development. Or it could indicate that we should develop design standards that would be used at kind of open for it to look at material choices. So they they use materials you would typically find in a residential setting. Those would be the kinds of things we could add on a policy level in a comp plan. We wouldn't likely get to a level of detail of saying that on a you know, cottage housing complex that no two units, no more than two units can have similar exterior. I mean, that that's probably more and more detailed than the policy we want to look at. But but looking at the envelope that this kind of housing would go into, or issues like compatibility, we could certainly look at policy or or recommend policy to go with that.
Thank you.
I will say that from a current planning perspective, we are often asked where a townhome development can occur. And unfortunately, our current zoning code only allows it essentially through a PD, which is an additional application, public hearing, additional costs process. And it's because our underlying development standards don't allow reductions in those standards to actually achieve townhome development. So PD and there are three zones about about the only way you can do townhomes. But you know, townhomes are something we get asked about frequently and people are very interested in potentially having those. And as a product where you get your own single family home, you know, you may share a common wall with another house next door, but it's a it's a type of rental or ownership opportunity. It's something we should, you know, seriously consider in our comp plan and eventually in our development standards.
Anybody have any questions? No, I don't. No questions, okay.
Hope it looks like Jamie Walshy has a question.
Jamie?
I do have a question. I was wondering what the history is of residential def- residential density definitions between Airway Heights and Spokane County? Like, why is there density differences between like high density, high density, medium density, low density?
Well, I guess the the answer to that would be we have to look at all jurisdictions in Spokane County at the differences in density. And then identify how those communities arrived at those densities. So sometimes density is arrived at because of reverse math. So basically, you know, for example, the city of Spokane had a minimum lot size requirement of about seventy two hundred square feet for, gosh, I don't know, forty years. So when you look at a comp plan, sometimes you're trying to marry both, let's say, GMA urban category with maybe what your historical pattern based on what your your zoning has required over a long period of time and and identify what your historic pattern is. And that translates into a density number that you are using for carrying forward to describe that category or, you know, continue that type of or that pattern of development. Maybe the better question is, what should we be looking at for a density category? Based on what the housing demand or requirements are and what is compliant with GMA for purposes of, you know, urban urban density. So there's some court cases out there under the growth parents board that have affected decisions predominantly for communities in the west side that try to do very low density adoption for residential categories. Then you could probably answer more on that topic of GMA and the evolving urban density description. But yeah, without asking each jurisdiction, how they arrived at their original density range, I would guess it's probably based in a combination of historic patterns and how they might be able to continue that.
You always have the best answers, Heather.
I appreciate that. Thanks, but it's not, I hate to say, you know, in a local community, you know, it's not some, you know, empirical, mathematical, you know, ideal model. It's it's often based on real development patterns. And the question of whether you can replicate that or not. And when I say replicate is, for example, in downtown areas, you know, this in the historic downtown areas, we have this great mix of of, you know, small retail storefronts, maybe with some, you know, mixed use in there for decades. Urban planners have been trying to create the formula and replicate that in brand new projects with some success and some other failures. You look across the net, it saves.
I was just gonna say, I would like to see some housing development designs to include solar powered homes. Because of all the climate change we're seeing happening, Airway Heights, we get extremely hot in the summer. And we, even this winter, we've had less cloud coverage. I know our area could sustain those type of homes and we really need those kind of homes. And think way out to the future, not just twenty, thirty years from now. I think we really need to think that way due to climate change. And me and Zach both worked in the Catalyst Building and and down in Spokane. And I mean, that building is a great example. It it works and it's all solar powered and I just would really like to see that, if we could add that into our our plan.
We're going to be getting together with the other consultants on the development of our utilities and capital facilities chapter toward the end of the month. And we'll forward that recommendation, Angelina, for them for potential policy about solar energy for residential housing or and maybe talking about incentives.
That'd be great, Heather.
Yeah, you just got my mind thinking because I I thought that the utility companies, this is twenty twenty ones, I thought the utility companies for a number of years up until twenty fifteen or twenty seventeen were offering some limited incentives. And then there was a federal tax incentive for homes to use solar. So it might be interesting if our consultants had any information on it, if those kind of incentive programs are going to go around again and how it might bring into policy.
I'm not sure. I think Washington State has has an incentive to. I'm not sure. I I sometimes see the ads on Facebook. So there must be there something.
Just, just so you guys know, the base gets leery on solar stuff just because of glare. And I think that the technology, I think the technology has come a ways. And so you just have to convince us that there's not going to be glare to the plane that's flying overhead that's going to blind the pilot or whatever. So those are the, those are the concerns that the base would have.
So it would be basically technology that makes the, it makes it opaque, so it's no longer reflective back.
Right.
Okay.
Well, and yeah, and I I think that there is technology out there now. I think they've come a long ways, but because I know that there's several air force bases that have a lot of solar powered infrastructure. So I I would imagine that they've they've created a way to avoid that glare or have it facing a certain direction so that it's not in the pilot's eyes. So we would just have to look at it. That's all.
No, that's a good point.
Oh, let's see. Well, that was just kind of the intro to Missing Missing Middle for Housing. And we're going to get more in depth over the committee meetings with Plank Commission about alternatives for housing to be put in the housing chapter as well as what these housing forms might look like. And so be kind of thinking about any essential policies that you want to be considered like Angelina indicating for solar or, you know, climate change mitigation for housing. And we refer to the book that draft.
That's it. You have any more either, or that's you finished?
All right, I believe that concludes all of the materials that we had on the agenda. I was just going to pop that up so we can take a look at it real quick. I don't think I can keep talking anyway and taking out some water.
Well, I'd like to, before we go to the minutes and I'd like to thank Jamie and Kevin and Ben for joining us tonight. Just in case we lose them afterwards, just want to thank them very much for joining us. And it's appreciated to have other people join and give comments to the meetings. So as far as for the record is concerned, we have Angelina, Commissioner Angelina present. We have Cal Patel and Hank, so we have a quorum. So in that case, we're going to go ahead and somebody wants to put a motion to approve tonight's agenda, which we have already done the workshop. But we'll continue with the approval process if somebody wants to make a motion. Hank? I need two people.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Anybody want to second?
I'll second it, Cal.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're going to move to approval of the minutes of the minutes of December fifteen, two thousand twenty one meeting. If there's no comments, I would like to get a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we don't have any public comments tonight, no presentation, no public hearing, no action items, we covered the workshop. Any commissioners have any reports or comments?
Still, we need to try to do that tree planting project. We have all been so busy, we haven't been able to get to that. Jeez, and I I know I would be pushing it again, hoping we could plant in the spring. But we have pulled a lot of information together, it's just a matter of getting us all together, so if we can do that soon.
Do we have a committee or somebody who's doing the planting thing? Or I I don't remember. Or is nothing's happened about that? I thought Zach was working on something, right?
Well, I was trying to pull folks together and I reached out to even the some prison folks and they said they would have, they could use the Airway Heights prisoners to help us plant. I was on the three fifty Spokane Board, but I had to resign because it's just too much work and being on this floor too. And some of those folks are willing to help us plant and get trees. I've been convers- conversating with them and they're just waiting on us. And then Heather's been letting us know there are certain areas and that we can and cannot plant and due to water sources and that kind of thing. But we just kind of need to put something more solid and maybe into a PowerPoint, just present it to all these folks and try to get everybody on board. And try to shoot for a season, a good time for the type of trees that we can plant. Depends on the tree, where where we planted.
My my suggestion or comment would be maybe if if we went to the council meeting and 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 brought this up and said, hey, we need support. Is there something the council can do to make this happen? The tree planting, I mean. Because there needs, there needs to be an organized body to make this happen. I mean, if it is going to get volunteers and try to do it, I don't think it's going to happen.
I need all the commissioners to get on board with me. We get all the three fifty folks and and Heather's always great. But yeah, council, bringing it to council or maybe even bringing it to the community too. It's a, it's a great idea.
Hank, anything? No?
I'm not too much. I was just kind of interested in the comment about the solar panels. I kind of walked that dog many years ago a little bit, and maybe things have improved now. But I remember, I want to say there was a I think they were called the qualitative reasoning group with Northwestern University did a study on just solar panels on just regular people's homes, you know? And they found out the efficiency is about fourteen percent. It, the solar panels that you typically find on a regular normal house, they don't track the sun typically, they're not on motors and mirrors and all that. So they only convert about fourteen percent of of the energy they collect into actual power. Some of the best systems you can get are only about twenty two percent efficiency. So there, I mean, maybe they've made some strides now where the solar panel cells are better. But that, you know, that's kind of an expensive system to initially install if you're building a home. And you know, the kind of winter weather we have and the clouds and the rain and the ice and the snow buildup. All those factors come into play. And so I'm going to have to noodle through some of that data and see if things have gotten any better. But that's what I can remember when I kind of went down that path with solar energy. So I just wanted to throw that little tidbit out there that you never reach a hundred percent efficiency with those systems. Other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you, Hank. That was good input. We don't have any more commissioners, so we're going to move to staff reports. If you have anything.
Zach, you want to go first? Zach, wanna go first?
Uh, sure. Just to give you all a quick update on current planning stuff, we are finalizing a conditional use permit. For the area heights Baptist church to put in a. It's essentially like a little private homeschool kind of facility there. So the building permits, all that are a little down the road, but the actual. Conditional use permit has been approved by the hearings examiner. So that's new. Uh, we have started back up with Mountain View Gymnastics, trying to finish up their move down towards highway two from their current location. So we're. Still working through that, but we're working with them. We have a couple of. Short plats and boundary line adjustments and things going on. So we're working through those. Uh, we will probably in March have a public hearing for you guys on an electric fence ordinance that is being. We're working through it right now, but it's out for a secret review. So we'll get you guys that information as soon as it's ready to go, but. It is a is not a city application. It's an application from a private firm. So that'll be something for you guys to look forward to in March. I think, well, we we have been given. Without getting too specific, cause I don't know the specifics yet, we have been given the green light to pursue. Proposals for essentially rebranding for the city, which would include a new website. A new logo, some photography, so we have more still pictures of the city we can use and. If for all the various functions we need, it's just overall branding. So we're kind of in the baby steps of that. Um, and getting that going, which is actually really, really exciting. It's something. Uh, a lot of people at the city and on the city council have wanted for a long time. So we're we're kind of in the baby steps of starting that. We work, we are working on an application to get some grant money. For the arts commission that we're hoping to get put together here fairly soon. So they'll have, you know, an event kind of built in as they start off. So. A little bit of long range stuff and a little bit of current stuff, but we're keeping busy. Heather, you can.
My great reports out. Um, so we were very lucky that we applied for grant funds from Spokane Transit Authority. To finish Sixth Avenue between basically Aspen. Drive and Craig Roads. It's about six hundred feet of incomplete roadway. Uh, we applied for a grant for, you know, about one point seven million dollars. And notified that we received the grant. So we're super excited. Yeah, I know. It's not, it's not awesome.
Oh, my God, yes.
It's nice to work on a grant application and get the money. Um, it's again be a game changer, I think, for our committee. Because it isn't just about the full road being built for that last six hundred feet to connect Craig. But it will enable Spokane Transit Authority to bring transit all the way down Sixth Avenue. So we will have transit roads all the way down. Into our residential core area. The project. Uh, would look at actual completion and construction by the end of twenty twenty four. Was served, services by the twenty twenty three with service by the end of twenty three, beginning of twenty twenty four by STA. Um, so we'll be working on the design of that over the next couple of months with the goal of having that out to bid. Hopefully this year and then construction and it would be following the whole Boulevard concept. That went out to public review last year for the sixth, tenth, twelfth arterial corridor that stretches from. Hickford Road all the way to Craig Road. So we would be doing it to, you know, with the full sidewalk by Penn Path, uh, curb roadway, et cetera. So we're super excited about that. Change for the city. And we're going to be applying for. A safe routes to school application from the transportation improvement board this year and the purpose of that would be to apply for funds to build. The demonstration demonstration project that we did on King and Tenth Avenue this last summer. So we. You remember, we did the project with mural, traffic control. And the activity area, extension of sidewalks. So the goal would be to apply this year for the funding. To actually build all of that. And what it would do is it would bring sidewalk all the way down to Tenth Avenue. For four or six blocks from where it stops in our residential area and we bring a. A main walking biking corridor to Sunset Parkinson's Elementary. Um, I think the preliminary estimates of that project cost for about five to six hundred thousand dollars. So. We'll be. Moving toward that and keep our thumbs up. We'll. Get those funds and be able to implement that demonstration project. So we have quite a few other projects that we're working on right now. Those are going, but. Hopefully we'll be able to see some actual changes in the landscape of the city here in the next two years. Not. Make it short and sweet. That's enough.
Right.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or anything before we adjourn for tonight? If there's no.
Kels, Kels, anybody else who was on the phone that wanted to comment, just for the public comment, Jamie or? Kevin, I think Sharon left or Ben.
I guess nobody. All right, if there's no further objections or comments, I would adjourn the meeting at, what time is it? I got all my screens covered.
Seven forty two, Cal.
Okay, seven forty two P M. Thank you, everybody, for joining the meeting tonight.
Have a good night.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Cap.